Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I see that we are joined by a majority of the commission. It is seven o'clock. I would like to give us just about two to three more minutes to see if we have a few other commissioners. We've got Commissioner Joseph Fields, Commissioner Mark Fields. We've got Commissioner McKnight, we've got Commissioner Presley, we've got Commissioner Miller, I've got myself, let's see, there's, and we've got Commissioner Bryant, I believe, on the phone. Is that correct, Ms. Solomon?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, so I think it's just Commissioner Lovett and Commissioner Phan. Let's see if they join us in just the next couple of minutes. So if you will, please just bear with us. We've got Attorney Wiggins with us, and we've got our court reporter with us. Very well. I'll send the messages. All right, I've sent them both the message, and so I'll give it just a couple of minutes. Okay. All right, Commissioner Phan would not be able to join us. Haven't heard back from Commissioner Lovett, but let's see here. All right. We'll go ahead and get started. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for the month of January. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish the quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Presley.
Present.
Commissioner Phan. Commissioner McKnight.
Present.
Commissioner Lovett. Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Bryant, I believe you're on mute.
Let's come back to him, Ms. Solomon, okay?
Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bryant. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Okay, thank you very much. And at the point, at the time when we are joined by Commissioner Lovett, I will ask that the record also reflect that she has joined us, okay? In the lieu of a prayer, this body serves a moment of silence. So I'll ask all those who are attending the meeting, commissioners, staff, and other attendees to please join us in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Our next agenda item is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Back up.
Uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Mark Fields, is that correct?
Bryant.
Bryant? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, that this body adopts the agenda as presented. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. The ayes have it. Commissioner Bryant, could you just also just sound present for the record?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our December meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The minutes for December have been went out yet? We haven't received them.
Okay. All right, so we will then move that to a later meeting.
Thank you.
We have nothing under the heading of old business, and we have three cases under the heading of new business. Before we go into all of our new business cases, at this time, I will read our rules for public hearings as all of our cases this evening will require a public hearing. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with Section ten dash two-two-one-nine of the East Point zoning code and development regulations. As we continue to meet virtually, I ask that all participants other than the commissioners and staff to mute their devices. Once we get to parts of the agenda that require public input, those who have notified staff of their desire to speak will be recognized to speak. If you did not notify staff but do desire to speak, please use the raise hand or chat function to be recognized. Public hearing rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for per side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the quorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall state his or her first name and current address. Each speaker shall only speak to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if after first been cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of the quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard our rules for public hearings. At this time, before we open our first case, I'd like for the record to reflect that we have been joined by Commissioner Patricia Lovett. Commissioner, could you please unmute and sound present for the record?
Present.
Thank you so very much. All right, commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number two-zero-two-three. C is in Charlie, P is in Paul, A is in Alpha dash zero-zero-one dash one-two. This is a text amendment. The applicant is the city of East Point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Presley.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
I'm sorry, complete, complete your motion, please, Commissioner Presley.
I was citing the case, no, I apologize.
No worries.
Two-zero-two-three, CPA dash zero-zero-one dash one-two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is that Commissioner Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Presley that this body opens a public hearing for case number two-zero-two-three. C is in Charlie, P is in Paul, A is in Alpha dash zero-zero-one dash one-two. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay?
Aye.
Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Staff, as the applicant, as being the city being the applicant, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Atkins. In reference to new business under case number one. Case number one. Item number one, excuse me, case number two-zero-two-three CPA dash zero-zero-one dash one-two. The applicant is the city of East Point. The pro, the location and description is citywide. This is a city-initiated map amendment to update the future land use map for the city of East Point. The case type, again, is a map amendment. In reference to this item, staff has actually requested to defer this item. There's still some information that we're researching, and we're working with our GS department to shore up the maps that will be presented before this body, and wanted to get a thirty-day deferral.
Okay. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry, is there? Is, was that Lovett?
Lovett, yes.
Yes, okay. There's been a motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that the body closes the public hearing for two-zero-two-three. C is in Charlie, P is in Paul, A is in Alpha dash zero-zero-one dash one-two. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Staff recommends deferral for thirty days.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard from staff regarding this text amendment regarding city-initiated maps. Um, and the request from staff is to defer, at this time, commissioners, defer for a time certain, which is thirty days, or our next regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept staff's recommendation to defer the said.
Case.
Case, thank you.
Yes. To our next regularly scheduled.
The number in front of me, I do apologize. I do not have the case number in front of me.
That's okay.
Just make the recommendation based on your statement.
Okay, and that is to defer for until our next regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
To defer until our regularly scheduled meeting next month, or the next one.
Right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's, uh, the second, was that Joseph Fields?
Yes.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Commissioner Lovett that this body defers case number two-zero-two-three. C is in Charlie, P is in Paul, A is in Alpha dash zero-zero-one dash one-two to our regularly scheduled February meeting. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay? The ayes have it, the item is deferred. Item number two, case number two-zero-two-three, R is in Robert, Z is in Zebra dash zero-zero-two dash one-two. Address one-five-zero-zero, Nabel Avenue. The applicant is Mitch Griffin, and this is a rezoning. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open the public hearing on case number two-zero-two-three RZ dash zero-zero-two dash one-two.
Okay, is there a second? Is it, there's been a motion made by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we open the public hearing for two-zero-two-three R is in Robert, Z is in Zebra dash zero-zero-two dash one-two. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All about, all opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'd like to ask if our applicant Mitch Griffin is present.
I, I'm here.
Okay, great. Mr. Griffin, do you need screen sharing capabilities for your presentation?
I came prepared, and I do.
Okay, great. Ms. Solomon, would you please grant Mr. Griffin screen sharing capabilities?
Mr. Griffin, you're able to share your screen.
Thank you.
Uh, can everybody see the screen?
We can.
Okay, so, uh, hey, everybody, my name is Mitch Griffin. Uh, my brother Nick is also on the call, I think also labeled as Mitch Griffin on the phone call. Uh, but we're the owners of Griffin Fitness LLC. And we just had a quick little presentation, the request for change in zoning for Griffin Fitness LLC at fifteen hundred Nabel Avenue. Uh, our location is located approximately one mile north of downtown East Point. It's where Harold Sheetz Bridge connects Nabel Avenue to the Jefferson Park neighborhood. It's circled in the big green circle. Uh, you can see the location here. Uh, we were established in March of twenty-eleven, myself and my brother Nick, as well as our dad Mike opened up the gym. Uh, original location was in College Park from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty. Uh, we were very fortunate to be able to purchase a building in East Point in twenty-twenty. Uh, the majority of our patrons are residents of East Point, College Park, and Haightville. Uh, some of the current services that we do provide, uh, we have strength and conditioning classes, yoga classes, movement classes, uh, open gym or a traditional, with traditional gym equipment. We offer kids classes for kids from the ages of three to fourteen and infrared sauna services. Our main goal is to help build the community in the tri-city, specifically East Point. Um, so the request to change from, we're currently zoned industrial one and seeking to change to the mixed commercial industrial. Uh, allowing this change of zoning will allow additional amenities for the citizens of East Point that the industrial zoning does not allow, such as chiropractic care, massage therapy, barber shop, and coffee service. Um, currently, we actually have one of each that we're in talks with that are looking to join us. We have the Lone Wolf Barber Shop, Shasta Coffee, The Motion Chiropractic, and Magnolia Fitness and Recovery, which is also a, uh, a massage service. So, um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? If you desire to speak, please use the raise hand function. Any other proponents? Hearing none and seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against? If you're here to speak against, please use the raise hand function. Okay, hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for two-zero-two-three. R is in Robert, Z is in Zebra dash zero-zero-two dash one-two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Miller that we close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Presley. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Okay? Staff, would you please sound your recommendation for fifteen hundred Nabel Avenue, case number two-zero-two-three R is in Robert, Z is in zero dash zero-zero-two dash one-two?
Are you frozen, Tay-Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. In reference to, uh, case number two-zero-two-three CPA dash zero-zero-one dash one-two, applicant Mitch Griffin, uh, current zoning is I-1 light industrial. The applicant's request to rezone existing property from I-1 to mixed-use industrial-commercial, which is our MXCI zoning district, to allow for an existing drin, a gym, to offer more commercial amenities within their establishment. Um, as stated, the property is currently zoned I-1 industrial, which does not allow the proposed uses. Um, the land use of this property is actually traditional urban neighborhood. Uh, just want to take a second to, um, talk about that. Um, we believe after doing, uh, research on our map and our comprehensive plan and the work that was done during our comprehensive plan, that this traditional urban neighborhood is a, um, a mistake and error. As all of the properties surrounding this area are all industrial, we believe that, um, the future land use is, um, actual the sub-area to the Lawrence Street, um, designation for land use. Um, I just wanted to state that, uh, prior to us providing our, um, recommendation, so that you better understand, um, why we're recommending what we recommend. Um, this is a site photo of the property. So staff recommends, staff recommends approval um, of the applicant's request to rezone the existing property from I-1 light industrial to the MXCI, which is our mixed-use commercial industrial zoning district, to allow for the gym to offer more commercial amenities with the following condition. Uh, the first condition is that the applicant is allowed to use commercial uses that support the primary purpose, providing services, um, to the current use, which is a gym. Um, the second condition, um, the following primary use, uses are not allowed, or the, uh, or the uses shall not be allowed. Nightclubs, car washes, automotive facility, cigar, cigar smoke shops, and dwelling units. Um, these uses are allowed in the MXCI zoning district, and so we're very intentful and specific on what, uh, we're recommending, uh, approval for, um, with the new MXCI zoning district.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and we've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Presley.
I make a motion for approval, um, coinciding with staff's recommendation, sir.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Presley, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body recommends approval with the conditions as stated by staff. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this? Okay. Um, Commissioner Fields, your hand is raised. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just a, just a clarification for, for me to understand. So if this is approved, any other business in that area, would they also, would this do, in, also allow them to go to MXCI as well, or will they all, that entire area is zoned? MXCI.
Um, so this petition is specific to the address of fifteen hundred Nabel Avenue, and it's, um, specific to that parcel. Um, the surrounding parcels are industrial. Are industrial zoning, uh, districts, which allow all of the industrial type of uses that are permitted by right in the light industrial zoning district. The MXCI zoning district is a zoning di- district that it was intent, intentfully created to act as a buffer between an issue that, uh, the city of East Point has in pockets, which is residential directly adjacent to industrial properties. So we feel like, um, this MXCI is, is, is an asset um, to this area specifically, and, uh, for future purposes, it's a, a, a land use that we feel can buffer between the, the existing, um, residential uses that are adjacent to industrial. Uh, but to answer your question, it would not, um, provide an MXCI for any of the properties that are surrounding it. It's specific to this one parcel.
Thank, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns, commissioners? So I've got a few questions. Um, Director Smith, with MXCI, the uses that are allowed in MXCI, also, um, there are other commercial uses that I think is where some of these other primary uses came from that you have listed in conditions. Um, could you give me those, um, zoning districts, those commercial zoning districts that roll up to MXCI, please?
Um, you mean the MXI, the C-one, C-two, those?
Yes.
Okay, Taylor, are you able to pull those up? Or is your computer froze?
I can do it, give me one.
Okay, let me, I'll stop sharing for a second.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So all of the permitted uses for MXI will be C-one, C-two, CL, CR, and MIX.
Okay. Can you go to the MIX uses, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, these are the MIX uses?
Yes.
Okay, you can scroll, uh, slowly, okay?
Okay.
Okay, keep going. So it's sparking things, okay? Okay, very well. All right, so, um, I wasn't quite sure of the MI, um, the MX uses, which is why I asked for that. But under the other category, CI, or, um, C-two, CL, and CR, um, there are a few uses that I also want to point out. So CI also allows drive-throughs. And, and I know that, um, with drive-throughs, there is a move to sort of really limit the number of drive-throughs because of the amount of pollutants that drive-throughs offer, particularly in the downtown area. So, um, and I think drive-throughs are also allowed in, uh, CL. So that would be an allow, allowable use, which I would like to consider us to restrict at that location. Um, and then also in C-two, it allows automotive, automobile, truck rentals, leases, and sales offices, and also automobile dealerships. My concern with that specifically is particularly for automobile dealerships, when they become like used car dealerships, then it could start to look, um, unsightly, particularly on our main street. Uh, so I would also like to consider, um, restricting that as a condition, and also leasing of trucks and automobiles, whether that is a truck for, um, moving and those things. Oftentimes, those things are stored in front, and so then it become, it looks like a storage lot for big, uh, moving trucks and things of that nature. I know that those are, um, allowed. Also, it allows for motels. In certain areas, we restrict, we restrict motels. And so, um, that's an area that, uh, or use that I would like for us to consider restricting, and boat and trailer sales. And boat and trailer sales are allowed in C two as well, that I would like to consider restricting. Uh motels are also offered or allowed in CL. As well as drive-throughs, so I've mentioned both of those. And in CR, carpentry is allowed. Carpentry almost sounds a bit more industrial. Um and I also want to consider limiting by restriction carpentry. The other thing that I would like to ask is, I think in the MXCI district studios. Or studios might be in some of these other districts. In one of the categories, it just simply says studio, there you go, number twenty-eight. But it doesn't really qualify the type of studio. Um I would like for the applicant to be able to have, and I think that they're already doing this, like a yoga studio. Or you know, it could be a photography studio or um. And I think if you go to section ten dash two zero seven five. That studio is better defined, but it was not defined under MXCI, so. I wanna get some clarification around that, if you look at number twenty-nine, it says studios, art studio, dance studio, photographer. Studios, which I think are all fine for this area. Um but I would have trouble for um perhaps a. A recording studio, perhaps, for this area. Oftentimes, those um if not restricted by hours. Um a lot of the artists are in the studios very late at night, it could be disruptive to. The adjacent area that's residential, and then it could also turn into some other things um. That I think I would like to try to restrict for this particular area. So those are some things that I would like to have the commission to consider adding as a part of the conditions. Um that staff has already created. The motion was made by Commissioner Presley, seconded by Commissioner Lovett. And so the question is to Commissioner Presley, would you accept these as a friendly amendment to your motion as a part of the condition, sir? Commissioner Presley, you're on mute.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lovett, would your second still stand? I don't see Commissioner Lovett, oh Commissioner Lovett, you're on mute. Let me see if I can reach her, she may have stepped away.
So that's to understand no additional uh the additional restrictions that you forementioned.
Yes.
You're correct, sir, okay, I'm in total agreeance to that.
Okay, thank you, and I'm just waiting to hear back from Commissioner Lovett if her second would still stand. Alright, she's not back, um. Carpentry. Commissioner Lovett, are you, have you returned? Let me see if I can reach her. Automobile, truck, rental, and lease, lease and sales.
Mister Chair, can you say that again for me, please?
Yes, automobile slash truck. Rental slash lease and sales. Let me just a second.
Excuse me, Mister Chair. Is that gonna include those um unsightly U V O L boxes?
Yes, it would include, it would include that, which is what I'm trying to avoid.
And this um for boat and trailer services, it sells, isn't it, sells too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Yes, you're recognized.
Uh thank you, a quick question, because part of the, a couple other things that were um approved in the area was. Uh it says, it just said training. And I'm not sure what that meant, technical schools, um. And so. Is there any concern about those?
I think institutions, because training could be business training, so I I did see those, but I thought like uh institutions and businesses um. They that those would be okay, so you could have a school, um. And I saw the childcare, I saw those things, one of the things that um. Staff, you had on here, I think what I saw earlier, it said residential uses. But I don't see that here, because.
They deleted it by accident.
Yes, that's residential uses, because in one of those districts, it allows for group homes. And so that would be residential, which is not, I think it's not the appropriate place. For a group home, so it was residential, I did see that um before previously. Did Commissioner Lovett return?
I've responded to your message, um what was your question, sir?
Yes, so we're adding some conditions, and as a friendly amendment, Commissioner Presley. Has accepted those, but you made the second, and so I wanted to know and need to know if your second would still stand.
Yes, yes, I do agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Lovett, um commissioners, are there others? Okay. Um so with that, commissioners, there's a motion on the floor to recommend approval with the conditions as um amended. The motion is made by Commissioner Presley, seconded by Commissioner Lovett. If there are no more comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All all opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body recommends approval, thank you, Mister Griffin.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Sure. Our next case is two zero two three R's in Robert Z's and Zebra dash zero zero one dash one two. This is at Zero East Washington. And this is a rezoning with concurrent variances, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing. For two zero two three R's in Robert Z's and Zebra dash zero zero one dash one two, all in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. I did see in the chat that speaking on behalf of BFG Acquisitions LLC. The first presenter would be uh attorney Alvin Kendall, is that correct?
That's correct, Mister Chairman.
Okay, Mister Kendall, you have the floor.
Mister Chairman and the committee, my name is Alvin Kendall, I'm a local attorney here in East Point. My address is eleven thirty-three Cleveland Avenue. Um I represent the applicant here, and we're asking for. A rezoning from R one A to R four. For new two hundred and eighteen unit market rate multifamily apartments. I would like to first give you all a little background on this piece of property. This property was the old Longview Trailer Trailer Park, excuse me. And and the old Longview Trailer Park landed on the fifty worst committees uh properties. In twenty twenty-three, the owner and the fifty worst uh committee. Entered into an agreement that the trailer park would be closed down and all occupants removed. Uh by the spring of, actually by the February of twenty twenty-three. The city commissioners, uh council members. Requested for the owner to move that back to the spring of twenty twenty-three. Which the owner uh uh agreed to do. The property now has been, all of the trailers have been removed, all of the tenants have um been relocated. The. Owners of eleven hundred Washington Avenue. Which is right across the street, a a hundred unit apartment complex. Is ended into an agreement or a contract to purchase this property to. Complement what they've done across the street and develop a two hundred and eighteen unit market rate multifamily apartments. The concurrent variances that the applicant is asking for. Is to reduce the unit size from eleven hundred plus, from eleven hundred plus. Uh eight hundred square foot ground floor to no minimum, so that'll give them a flexibility. To be able to put in the one, two, and three bedroom units. They're also asking for an increase in the height from forty-five feet to fifty feet. If you ever been on the property, there's at one time. When Longview Trailer Park was there, that trailer park sits quite lower than the adjacent trailer park. That is to the west of the old Longview Trailer Park. They're also asking to reduce the parking space diff- difference from the property line from ten feet to zero feet. This property is very narrow and it has a tremendously. High drop off from on the Norman Berry side of the property. So there are some constraints on trying to build on on the property. The next slide here is the site plan. And what is proposed here is four units. And the two hundred, the configuration of the two hundred and eighteen units would be eighty-one bedroom units. Fifty-eight two-bedroom units and and eighty-three bedroom units. This mix has come from the the developers. Um. What they are experiencing across the street at eleven hundred uh Washington Avenue. The one and three bedroom units are the most uh popular. You can see on here, the proposed monthly rents vary from twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month for the one bedroom. Up to eighteen hundred dollars for the three bedroom. These prices are. In line with what is being charged across the street at the eleven hundred uh Washington Avenue. The next slide will show uh some examples of the elevation and the type of buildings that would be built. They are basically five-story high. And consist of the two hundred and eighteen uh units. Mister Chairman, I'd like to reserve the remainder of the time for any questions or any rebuttal.
Okay, questions don't happen during this portion of the meeting, that is after the public hearing, if there are questions of the applicant, Mister Kendall. However, I did see that there were in the chat that there were others um who may want to speak as proponents. So those names were uh Mister Jeff Haymore, Miss Ashley Madsen, and Mister Paul Flippo. So if there are any other proponents here to speak in favor, uh would you please raise your hand, any other proponents here to speak in favor? Okay, I don't see any raised hands, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, that we close the public hearing for case number two zero two three. R's in Robert Z's and Zebra dash zero zero one dash one zero, all in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, Chairman, in reference to case number two zero two three R C dash zero zero one. Dash one two, a rezoning with five concurrent variances. The applicant is BFG Acquisitions LLC. The zoning of the property is currently R one A urban residential. The request applicant is seeking to redevelop an existing mobile home park. To construct affordable housing or market rate housing, excuse me. The request is to rezone the property from R one A urban residential to R four multifamily residential. With five concurrent variances, including union unit size, parking space, distance, building height, open space, and. The amenities package. The current zoning as stated is R one A, it is located in the Cleveland Avenue overlay. The future land use map uh of this is traditional urban neighborhood. Excuse me, correction, is redevelopment neighborhood? A redevelopment neighborhood has certain visions and intents and goals um as seen in the slide. Um some of the neighborhood and future development patterns, um specifically typical zoning districts that are allowed and um. And proposed for this area is R one, R L, R one A, R T. R two and R three, as stated, the request is for R four. Um the use and scale of this type of uh land use designation, residential. Uh redevelopment neighborhood calls for residential units, four to eight units per acre. Single-family residential, limited multifamily duplex, triplex, and quadplex. At crossroads and where um currently exist. The height um for this area, according to our our comprehensive plan, is one to three stories. And there are other um descriptions as well, but we thought those were important to note. Um again, the rezoning, it's a rezoning and it has concurrent uh variances associated with. Um as stated, it's um reductions in the unit size, reduction in the open space. Uh reduction in the required amenities, um there are seven required amenities, they are wanting to go to three. Um there's a reduction in minimal parking uh requests. There's also um a reduction in parking space distance from property line from ten feet to zero feet. In the uh concurrent variances that were submitted as the at the application. This is a copy of the site plan, as you've seen. And staff's recommendation is to deny the applicant's request to rezone the property from R one A urban residential. Uh with the concurrent variances uh to R four. The proposed rezoning is not compatible with the zoning districts of the redevelopment neighborhood. As it is outlined in the comprehensive plan to allow for the following zoning districts, which um. As stated previously, the R one, R L, R one A, R T, R two, and R four. That's the end of our recommendation.
Three, I just want for the record to correct, you said R four, but.
In R three, excuse me, yes, sir, R four is not included, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant and we've heard staff's recommendation. Um I'm gonna entertain a motion in just one second, but before I do that, I need some clarification because. I wanna make sure that I heard Mister Kendall correctly. Mister Kendall, in your presentation, you. Mr. Kendall, in your presentation, you stated that this is a, an application for two hundred and eighteen market rate units. Is that what you said?
That is what I said.
Okay, the application, and so this is a complete turnaround from the entire work session discussion. It is also inconsistent with the caption for the application, which reads, the applicant is seeking to redevelop an existing mobile home park to construct affordable housing, which is a huge part of the discussions of last week. If this is what was advertised and now the applicant is coming back and saying, okay, yeah, no, we don't want affordable housing, we want market rate, I'm a bit confused by that. So I need to make sure, because one thing was advertised and the presentation was different this evening. So the applicant is seeking market rate units?
Yes, sir. And let me explain, let, let, let me explain why you may have heard something different last, last week. I was not on the call because I got my schedule mixed up and I thought that the call had been, been canceled. The prices that we are advertising last week, the week before, and we'll be advertising next week are what's on the slide. For the city of East Point, these prices are market rate for what we have found in the area. Someone may have described it as affordable, which, yes, they are affordable, but this is the market rate in the city of East Point for this, uh, size apartment units. And we have proof of that for the units that the same owner or developer has at eleven hundred Washington.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask for our matter, because I have, I have some responses to that, okay? Uh, but before I get to that, I am going to ask, um, our attorney. Um, we're getting into a dialogue on this and generally we need a motion and a second for this. But I am concerned that the caption reads affordable housing and now the applicant is stating that they're seeking market rate housing. Madam Attorney, are there conflicts? Is there any kind of exposure for us to act in a different way other than?
Can you hear me? I was trying to unmute.
Okay, no, we just heard you.
Okay, so no, I did see the hearing from the applicant and seeing what was advertised are two different things.
Exactly.
Let me just think through this. So they have changed what their application is. Out of abundance of caution, it needs to reflect and to ensure the public has had an opportunity to weigh in on what the actual project is, not what it used to be. Um, that's so small, let me see if I can make that bigger. But this is, this is where I guess I'm having a rub, whether it's affordable or market rate, it does not change the request for the entitlements.
Thank you.
Um, it does not change the, the variance request either. And I'm not sure, um, and I would need to research what authority the planning commission and or staff has over the determination of which one it is. Um, if they are presenting something differently than what was previously advertised, you know, to make it clean, it would make sense that you let the public know that this is a rezoning and a concurrent variance for exactly what they're seeking, which is um, or what their project is, which is market rate. I think we're okay, Mr. Chair, the more I think about the entitlements wouldn't change uh, or the request for the entitlements wouldn't change, um. I think, I think we're okay.
Okay, I have a question. So yes, I agree completely on the issue of entitlements. And I'm looking at the, what I, what I, what rubs me is that if in the advertisement the words affordable housing were used and tonight it's different, then I, I just want whatever's advertised for the public, for the public to have been fully informed of what is actually being proposed.
Right, I think, yeah.
And, 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 and then the other piece to that is there are two things. One, last week, the conver- so the conversation was so very different because it was talking about sixty to eighty percent of AMI. The other thing that was stated last week is that, um, the that Washington Carver, which is also a development next door that Mr. Kendall has referenced this evening, it was also shared that those are one hundred percent affordable. This evening, Mr. Kendall came and also said that the rents would reflect the rents there and, but he's now saying that those are market rate rents and not affordable rents. And so I just feel that there's, there's something in the butter mix here for me that makes me very uncomfortable. May I, certainly, if, if one thing is, I'll have to, um, recognize you, Mr. Kendall, to speak. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. And so I'm, I'm a bit concerned about that because the presentation last week was one thing and then this week it's, oh no, we're doing market rate.
I certainly understand, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
I certainly understand your concern, but the considerations for the planning commission and the considerations that the E staff would need to use to evaluate won't be different. I stand by my recommendation that the planning commission can move forward with a motion on the, um, the entitlements that are on that are before you guys or, and the, and the, you know, the rezoning and the variances. I, I still think that you could move forward, even though the description of the project has changed, but respectfully, I think it's more, I don't really think it's changed, right? I think you may have different words, but from the explanation.
Okay.
It, it, it seems the same.
Yes, no, I get it. The entitlements would absolutely be, what they're seeking is absolutely the same in terms of the entitlement. I just that just struck me in such a way that I wanted to make sure we got clarification around that. Um, so thank you, um, Madam Attorney. Um, Mr. Kendall, is there something that you wanted to add to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There is no definition in the East Point code of what is affordable housing. Affordable housing in the metropolitan Atlanta area has become
Mr. Kendall, just one second. I'm, I'm getting, you're breaking up. And, uh, so your connection, can you check your connection, please? No. Mr. Kendall, we can't hear you.
I can speak if you can't hear him.
Well, no, no, we can't, we can't hear you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this and entertain a motion, because I've heard from the planning and zoning attorney. And so I don't want us to continue to have discussion on this without a motion in a second. And if there are questions of the applicant, then a commissioner may call on the applicant to answer those questions. Mr. Kendall, if you would, please lower your hand. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant and we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That we accept, um, staff's recommendation.
The recommendation to deny? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Presley, that this body recommends denial of the rezoning with concurrent variances for case number two zero two three R's and Robert Z's and zebra dash zero zero one dash one two. Are there any comments, questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body recommends denial. Next on our agenda would be announcements. Staff, do you have any announcements that's good for the body?
Yes, I have one. Um, I do want to say thank you to everyone who served on the planning commission and everyone who will be staying. Can you please send me your updated contact information, please? I'll send it, but please.
Thank you very much. And to that point, commissioners, remember that per our bylaws, this body is required to elect officers at our regularly scheduled February meeting. And, uh, could you also please remember that we updated the bylaws so that staff would then, in the month of March, make a presentation to the body, which would include our officers and maybe by that time, if there are any changes in the composition of the commission, that they would be privy to that presentation as well, that would speak to any special districts, overlays and any of those things within the city of East Point, so that if there are new bodies that will come on to join the commission, that they will be aware of those things. And so that is the announcement that I have. Commissioner McKnight, I saw that you had a hand raised.
Sorry, I did that by mistake. My apologies.
No worries. Okay, if there are no other announcements, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is removed by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we adjourn our regularly scheduled January meeting. All in favor, sound aye? All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Commissioners, thank you all so very much and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night.